Good morning. It is, uh... Welcome to our, uh, June fourteenth, twenty eighteen Planning Commission meeting. Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, Sue.
Good morning. We have three commissioners out today. Commissioner Haugie, Commissioner Herzog, and Commissioner Johnson. So, Mr. Rokucci. Mr. Severson. Mr. Moss. Mr. Nate.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, EJ, Planning Director, report.
Good morning. We have the, uh, the magic four, or making the magic four number up here today, so welcome and thanks for being here.
You can refer to us as the A-Team.
The A-Team? You are the A-Team. Uh, so EJ Avaldi with the Planning Services Division. So today's meeting is, uh, somewhat different as we have, uh, two nuisance abatement matters that you'll be asked to take action on. Uh, we're gonna have county council brief for those items, uh, talk about those hearing procedures as they're somewhat different than your typical, uh, items that you hear. Uh, we also have Lee Chavez here today who's gonna talk about Environmental Coordination Services, and what they do for the agency, uh, which will be in just a little bit. So, looking at the upcoming calendar, uh, summer officially kicks off next week, so I thought I would give you a reprieve for the next meeting. So we're looking at canceling June twenty eighth. It's really not because of summer starting, but it's just 'cause we're getting projects ready and teed up for the commission. So June twenty eighth, uh, will be canceled. June twelfth, uh, is scheduled to occur. That's gonna be in Auburn.
July twelfth.
What's that?
I think you said June. That's Ju- July.
July twelfth. Thank you. I do that every time, just to keep you guys on your toes. So, uh, July twelfth, the first meeting in July. Uh, at that hearing, we have the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Phase Two, Glen Willow. These are alternative, but we hope to have them here for you. Uh, that's the one hundred and seventy-seven lot subdivision in West Placer. Uh, we hope to have the draft EIR hearing for the Mill Creek subdivision. Uh, that is a three hundred and fourteen lot subdivision, also in West Placer, south of PFE Road. Uh, we're gonna bring forward a workshop on the tiny house zoning text amendment. Those are the tiny houses, I believe, under four hundred square feet on wheels. Uh, so that'll be a workshop first before we actually bring that back, uh, as an action item for your, uh, for your commission. We're also going out to the municipal advisory councils to, uh, present that as well. Uh, and I believe we have a appeal of a zoning administrator decision that we're gonna try to get on that agenda as well. That's the first meeting in July. Second meeting is July twenty sixth. That's also gonna be here in Auburn. Uh, we'll hear an update on the Placer County Conservation Plan. The draft EIR and EIS is nearing completion, and so we'll have a subsequent hearing later, uh, later in this year, uh, on that, uh, document. Then, we also are bringing forward the zoning text amendment, which is kind of the cleanup that's addressing setbacks and certain protocols for hearings and, uh, cell towers and so forth. Uh, you've had workshops on that before. We finally got that package together, and we're gonna bring that back, uh, during that July meeting. And that is all I can tell you right now as far as schedule, 'cause there's a lot of other moving pieces right now, but, uh, other than that, that's all I have for you, so.
Any questions for EJ? Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, it's time for a public comment. This is the opportunity for things that are not on our agenda. If you wanna comment on them, we cannot take any action on them. I would request that you have only three minutes to make your comments, um, and that would be the same case as we move into the items on our agenda as well, so just give you preparation on that. So is there anyone who would like to speak on anything that's not on our agenda today? Okay, I'll close the, uh, public comment on that and move on to our consent agenda. We have a number of items on there. There is an opportunity for, uh, the commission, any of the commission members or the public, uh, to request that any of these items be pulled for discussion, so I'll... Would the commission like any of those pulled for discussion? How about the public? Anybody want those pulled? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in absence of that, I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Roll call.
I have a first by Commissioner Moss and a second by Commissioner Rokucci. So, Mr. Rokucci.
Yes.
Mr. Severson. Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll move on to our ten oh five item. Um, Community Development Resource Agency Spotlight on Environmental Coordination Services.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Chairman Nader and fellow commissioners. My name is Lee Chavez. I am a principal planner and the environmental coordinator with the Community Development Resource Agency. My division within SEEDRA is Environmental Coordination Services, or ECS, and I'm here today to describe what my division does for SEEDRA and the county. ECS is a small but very busy division within SEEDRA. We are comprised of myself and Shirley Harrington in the second row here. She is a senior community development technician. The primary function of ECS is to ensure that all environmental reviews are well coordinated and the ultimate environmental impact analysis is defensible. So, what does that mean? It means that from the initial application through environmental clearance, we do our best to keep the wheels greased, to anticipate roadblocks to project approval, and to ensure a thorough and defensible environmental document is produced. So just a little background on SEQA, and this is undoubtedly review for some of you, but all county-sponsored projects, or projects that require discretionary approval by the county must comply with California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, for short. And in some cases, our projects may have federal dollars or may occur on federal land, in which case they will also have at least a portion on federal land. They may also have a national environmental policy, or NEPA, environmental review component. When NEPA is involved, ECS helps coordinate the county's efforts with the federal agency that is the federal lead. As I mentioned, ECS' primary role within the department is facilitating SEQA review. The goal of SEQA is to provide transparent and meaningful public disclosure of environmental impacts to the interested public and state, federal, and local agencies, and to provide thoughtful and meaningful analysis of a given project to help the zoning administrator, the planning commission, and in some cases, the board of supervisors make an informed decision about whether to approve or deny a project based on its merits, but in consideration of the project's potential environmental impacts. You've undoubtedly heard the terms negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, environmental impact report, and in some cases, categorical exemption or statutory exemption. Each of these types of documents equates to a level of environmental review. Today alone, your commission is considering finding three proposals categorically exempt from SEQA, finding that two extensions of time are consistent with a previously adopted mitigated negative declaration, and finding that two extensions of time are consistent with a previously approved or certified CIR, EIR. So a quick rundown on the various levels of environmental review. Statutory and categorical exemptions are essentially a determination that a given project is exempt from further review because the action has already been determined to have limited impact. This can either occur as a result of a statutory or by law exemption, or a project can qualify for one of several categories of actions that have been predetermined to have limited environmental impact. A negative declaration concludes that while a project could have a potentially significant environmental effect, detailed review of the project leads to a conclusion that the project won't have a significant effect. A mitigated negative declaration concludes that while a project could have a potentially significant environmental effect, incorporation of mitigation measures into the project will effectively reduce those impacts to a less than significant level. And then an EIR is the most thorough level of environmental review. An EIR is prepared when potentially significant impacts are possible, and they may or may not be able to be fully mitigated to a less than significant level. An EIR can conclude that a project will have a significant effect, but then the governing body must adopt a statement of overriding considerations which states that a project's benefits to the public outweigh its potential environmental effects. In order to process SEQA, ECS does the following. We act as a liaison between the Environmental Review Committee, or ERC, various state, federal, and local service agencies associated with a development proposal, and the applicant team. The ERC is comprised of experts from various county departments. The ERC includes planners and engineers who specialize in land development planning, transportation planning, parcel and subdivision map act requirements, air quality and greenhouse gas requirements, public services, and public health and safety. This means that the ERC includes expert representatives from SEEDRA, DPWF, environmental health, the sheriff's office, fire planning services, and more. And each of these departments have important roles to play in ensuring that the potential impacts of a project are identified and reduced to a less than significant level, if possible. ECS then attends and arranges, uh, arranges and attends pre-development meetings which are designed specifically to eliminate the guessing game by providing early information to an applicant about what the county or other service provider or service district will ultimately need in support of their environmental review, and ultimately, project entitlements as well. The goal of the pre-development meeting is to help applicants fully understand what they will need to provide to satisfy the county's application process, and to attempt to eliminate surprises during the environmental review process. Once an applicant has gathered all the information that the county needs in order to complete the environmental review process, ECS reviews the application for completeness and distributes the application along with the supporting materials to the ERC. A complete application is the trigger for environmental review to begin. ECS then tracks the review cycle to ensure that critical statutory timelines are followed, so our environmental reviews are not tripped up by administrative errors. And we also coordinate review of other jurisdictions' projects that could affect the county in some way, such as Sacramento or Roseville, state parks, et cetera. In addition, my specific role as the environmental coordinator includes reviewing all negative declarations and mitigated negative declarations for internal consistency and adequacy, reviewing all critical sections of EIRs prepared by the EIR consultants, again, for internal consistency and adequacy, routine coordination with county council to ensure our SEQA documents are as complete, logical, and legally defensible as possible. And because SEQA is the subject of frequent lawsuits, the playing field is always changing, so I stay up to date on SEQA case law to help inform our documents. To be sure, ECS has at least some level of involvement with almost every land development application that comes through SEEDRA. Another key function of ECS is to, uh, to coordinate with outside regulatory agencies, in particular, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, which is the agency with responsibility for protection of the state's wildlife resources. CDFW frequently comments on our SEQA analyses, and a mutual understanding between our two agencies is important for, and ultimately beneficial for, project applicants. I meet periodically with CDFW staff to facilitate that mutual understanding. And I also coordinate outreach proj- programs with the culturally and geographically affiliated Native American tribes in our area. Senate Bill eighteen requires that the county offer consultation to Native American tribes regarding impacts to Native American cultural, spiritual, and ceremonial places, features, and objects resulting from adoption of or amendment to the county's general plan. And then Assembly Bill fifty-two is a more recent law that requires the county to offer consultation to culturally and geographically affiliated tribes regarding any project that is subject to SEQA review. The goal of AB fifty-two is to recognize not only the scientific and archaeological values of a resource, but also their cultural values to the the interested tribe. Our most active and interested Native American tribe is the United Auburn Indian Community, or UAIC. I meet monthly with UAIC to discuss projects that are going through AB fifty-two consultation, and I also coordinate as frequently as requested with other area tribes. My goal is to have quarterly meetings with these less active tribes, such as the Colfax Todd's Valley Tribe, Shingle Springs, et cetera. I started with SEEDRA a little less than a year ago. My main focus this year has been getting up to speed with the Placer County processes and establishing relationships with staff from other county departments or local regulators and Placer County's culturally and geographically affiliated Native American tribes, as well as instituting some quick and relatively straightforward process improvements. But my goal with the next fiscal year will be to tackle some of the larger process improvements, including streamlining our environmental checklist to avoid redundancies in what the applicant is required to submit in support of their SEQA reviews. So, that in a nutshell is Environmental Coordination Services. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question for you.
Okay.
As you were speaking, you got me thinking about this, and maybe it's a question Clayton should answer, but wanting to have defendable SEQA positions. Normally, when we take a vote on a project, um, part of the motion is that it's approved subject to the SEQA findings in the report. Should my motion for those several items on the consent agenda have included that it was subject to the findings in the various reports?
The answer to that is when they're on the consent agenda, they don't also need to have separate approval of findings.
Okay.
Consent to everything that's in.
I, I, 'cause I noticed the findings were all included within the reports like they typically are, but it doesn't need to be addressed separately if it's a consent item.
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm glad to hear you're doing process improvements.
Yeah, that's a really big, uh, topic for Steve.
I think the review of that has been long overdue, uh, in my opinion. We hear from a lot of, uh, people who are presenting projects that this is, uh, seems pretty onerous at times, and I understand that the county has a responsibility to meet the requirements of SEQA or obviously be challenged, uh, in that, uh, error, the inadequacy of it. Uh, but it seems to me that, especially in the more simplistic kinds of projects that may come into the county, that there may be a a more streamlined process to doing that. For example, a very simple, uh, lot split where there's no clear, significant, direct or indirect impacts, uh, there should be, I think, a lot easier process to go through than, say, months and months of of answering questions and having, uh, experts going out and doing reviews on that. Uh, just anything we can do to hold the cost down, but yet still meet the requirements, I think is important to do that. I mean, it is all ties in to, uh, the need for affordable housing in our community as well as the state, that we need to be as efficient as we can, uh, obviously without compromising, again, our systems, but, uh...
Right, agreed. And we are looking for those streamlining
Right.
opportunities.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. Go ahead. Sure, I'm done.
One thing that came to mind while you were discussing this was, uh, a joint
EIR, EIS is an example that, right now, at Squaw Valley, we have an application for a big tram that connects between Squaw and Alpine, and it's both being processed by the county as a local agency, but also affects the forest service, which, how do you marry those two processes together and make it, uh, understandable, I guess?
It has been a big challenge to marry our two processes together. We've got a really good team working on it. So, it's been a little less painful than it could have been, but it making the two types of documents meld, NEPA and SEQA are very similar, but not identical. So, it's been, it's been a challenge, for sure.
Have we ever been challenged on that process and have any guidance from that? In other words, have we found, we have
Man, I'm not aware of a challenge specifically.
Heads up, I guess.
County council?
So, you're asking if we've been challenged on the joint EIR, EIS?
Well, if we've been challenged on it, and do we have to amend our process to match theirs, or can we assume that they will amend theirs to match ours, I guess?
So each of our agencies has, have their own approval processes. Ultimately, what we need in a combined document is something that serves both agencies, and that's been, that's been the big challenge. But we don't typically, we wouldn't bend to the forest services way. They wouldn't bend to our way. We need to figure out a way to have a document that works for both approvals.
I guess you can just about walk on water, then.
We have been challenged on EIR, EIS, um, joint programs before, but not on the topic that you're talking about, at least to my knowledge.
Well, I just, it comes to mind because it's happening.
Yeah, it's timely.
I guess it's easy to think about a little bit and
Yeah.
wonder what we have to do to make it function, I guess.
The public review period just closed for the base-to-base gondola, so we've, we've got about two hundred comments that we're gonna have to deal with.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Richard, do you have a question?
No, not a question, but I was commenting on what you were saying earlier about, um, some minor projects without compromising, you know, and getting involved in lawsuits. I just wanna relate. About thirty years ago in Roseville, I was gonna put a sidewalk in front of my house, and that's, you need an encroachment permit because it's in the, it's in the right-of-way, or easement, anyway, in the city of Roseville. And their insurance requirement was like ten million dollars. Well, you know, house insurance usually have, you have a million-dollar policy, whatever. But it was the same insurance requirements that if I would have dug, uh, thirty-foot trench out in the middle of the road. So, I, I got with the city and now, and then they, so they have an abbreviated one for minor, you know, for putting a sidewalk or repairing a sidewalk in front of your house or doing something like that versus a real contractor, not myself, uh, digging up the road and having this big old trench with a big, you know, stopping traffic and everything else. So, I think there, there should be ways that, on some of these little minor things, um, without compromising the process to get these things done, rather than having to write an EIR this thick for, uh, something that involves maybe a little lot split between two little houses or something. I don't know. An example, but you know, it's, because a big project, I guess it's okay to go through this process, you know, because there's a lot of stuff to do, but when you come down to the lower process, there must be a simpler way to do some of these things. I don't know.
I say, I know one thing that we do at TRPA, and that is we create a list of exemptions, things like, and you describe exactly what you did. And those are exempt under certain, and certain things you only have to notify your neighbors or something, you know.
You didn't have to, but
It's not a big deal.
Nobody got sued over it from an EIR standpoint, I think?
And I think that, that's a way that we can look at to
Yeah.
amend it a little bit, make it, as you say, more palatable.
And that is the way SEQA is set up. There are exemptions available. We just, we as staff just have to be sure that we can meet the conditions of the exemption, so that we're defensible.
Well, I'll be interested in hearing how that process is going of making those appropriate adjustments. Do you have a timetable for starting to implement some changes?
Well, we've implemented over the past year a lot of, uh, fairly straightforward, um, process improvements. My goal is so that when the applicants come in, they know exactly what's needed.
Right.
They, you know, it's very clear what will ultimately be required of them. And then they can talk to me or staff about things that they think are excessive or maybe too early in the process, so that's really what we wanna do, is facilitate the process. So we're not slowing folks down, but then we get enough that we can present a document that is defensible.
I know at any given time, there's numerous SEQA suits going on within the county. I also know that at any given time, a large number of those are probably filed more for their nuisance value in the development process than true SEQA concerns. The ones that are truly, wouldn't say necessarily legitimate, but the ones that don't fall under that nuisance value kind of suit, how often are we, or is, is the county on the, the losing side of those?
You know, I think Placer County has a really good track record. I'd look for council's input on that, but we tend to have very solid SEQA basis behind us. It, there will always be the folks who will use SEQA as a tool because it's a very easy thing to sue on. It's already set up for that lawsuit, kind of by statute.
And no advance preparation can put a stop to that.
Right, and we'll get sued on things that, that are completely defensible in the document. It's just a tool to slow things down.
But on the ones that actually go through the whole hearing process and stuff, the, the, the win-loss ratio, I guess you'd say, is, is, is pretty, pretty good in favor of, of the county process?
Yes, I would say in general, we, uh, more often than not, we're successful on those, and a lot of that is a credit to staff's time going into it beforehand to make sure it's, a thorough review is done.
And it's a, a moving target, so I, I think that, that it's a
It is.
good thing to, that we're kind of aware of that and, and, and tracking it closer, I guess.
Do you have another comment or question, Larry? Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, thank you for the report. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, please turn your cell phones off. All right, I'm gonna, uh, turn this next section of our agenda over to county council. We have a very specific process that we have to handle through this item. This is our ten fifteen and also ten thirty items. So I'm gonna let him kind of walk us through this, uh, and, uh, so, uh, Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, you're going to be hearing two nuisance abatement matters. It's been a while since we've had one of these, so I wanted to briefly go through the procedure, um, because these hearings are a little bit different. As each item is called, the clerk is going to place, uh, all individuals who wish to testify in that matter under oath. We then will proceed with the code compliance officer presenting the case. Uh, the request before you in, in both of these matters is determine whether to order the abatement of the nuisance. You'll be charged with listening to the evidence and the testimony, and then making a decision thereafter. You're allowed to ask questions throughout the public hearing, uh, should you choose to do so. Any member of the public, in particular, the property owner or affected person, has a right to present their case. They also have the right to cross-examine any witnesses that appear, either on behalf of the county or in the audience. Um, so you need to make sure to allow time for that. You may establish time limits for the comments for the public and for the property owner or affected person's testimony, um, as you would in any normal hearing. Uh, the rules of evidence, as they apply in court, do not apply to this. Um, hearsay evidence can be presented. Um, there's no objections to evidence, but with that being said, this is an evidentiary hearing, so you are required to weigh all the evidence and testimony that's provided before you before you make a conclusion. Also, as to my role, my legal representation during this proceeding is limited solely to the commission. Uh, the county's code compliance division is represented by several counsel. Are there any general questions as to that process?
The swearing in of people that would like to speak, do we do that all at once at the beginning, uh, of anyone who wants to speak on that particular item? Is that correct?
Yes, so after the matter is called, then we would swear in everybody that wants to speak on that matter.
So we don't do it as we go through. We're doing it right up front.
Right.
Right. Any questions on that for Clayton? Okay, our first, uh, nuisance abatement is Thomas, uh, Tom, uh, Tommy Allen Bridges. Uh, it's a matter in Dutch Flat. Uh, so I would ask that anybody who is, wants to speak on this item, uh, that the clerk, um, would, uh, give them that oath. So, uh, anyone who wants to speak on that, would they, uh, please come forward and take that process. Sue, are you gonna take care of that?
Yes.
Okay.
So anyone giving testimony today on this matter must do so under oath. If you intend to give testimony, testimony on this matter, um, everyone is now standing. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state "I do" now.
I do.
You may be seated. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna first hear from the code enforcement compliance officer.
Yeah, go ahead and sit. And Okay, thank you.
Good morning, chairman and members of the commission. My name is Estelle Maxwell, and I am a code compliance officer with the Building Services Division of Placer County. The nuisance abatement before you is owned by Tommy Allen Bridges and is located at thirty-two, six forty-five Clark Street in Dutch Flat. The parcel is zone residential, single-family, design historic, and is point two-six of an acre.
historic, and is .26 of an acre, which is equivalent to 11,325 square feet in size. Code compliance received a complaint in December 2016 regarding outdoor storage, abandoned vehicles, and a cargo container being stored on-site. After multiple attempts to contact the property owner, I have had no response from him regarding any notices mailed out or posted on the property. On May 18, 2018, I posted the property with all notices pertaining to this hearing regarding the abatement of his property. The property owner was previously cited in order to comply through trial in Plaister County Superior Court, and fines were imposed. The property was cited for multiple violations from 2006 through 2015, which resulted in little to no change. The property is currently in violation of exceeding the allowed 200 square feet of accessory storage, accessory storage being stored within the front setback, as well as accessory structure cargo container that's not allowed in the residential, single-family zone district. The existing burnt structure on-site has also been deemed a dangerous building and has been posted. At this time, the code compliance is requesting your commission to determine that the nuisance exists for the property located at 32645 Clark Street in Dutch Flat, and that the property has been afforded, the property owner, excuse me, has been afforded sufficient amount of time to come into compliance with the county's requests. The division also requests your commission to order Mr. Bridges to abate the nuisance by removing all accessory storage in excess of 200 square feet and all storage within the front setback, as well as removing the accessory structure slash cargo container within 30 days or agreed upon by your commission. Code compliance asks that if the property owner, Mr. Bridges, does not complete this abatement within the time allotted, your commission will then authorize and empower the code compliance division to abate the nuisance by removing and disposing of the materials in violation of the accessory storage and accessory structure zoning codes set forth in the Plaister County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that, I can go through, that's the frontal view from the street view, so when you're approaching, this is, this is what the neighbors will be seeing. There is a, how does this work, Sue? There is a residence located to the right and two to the rear that have to travel through the driveway to get to the residence. That's the dangerous building that I spoke about earlier. The accessory structure or cargo container that's not allowed in the residential zone district, as well as accessory storage in the front setback, the opposite side of the dangerous building and the posting, and more accessory storage. Staff recommends that the planning commission take the following actions. One, find this matter categorically exempt under the SEQA guideline, section 15321, and Plaister County Code, section 18.36.230, class 21 of enforcement actions by regulatory agencies. Two, approve the nuisance of an abatement order supported by the following findings or as shown on the screen, as well as on page four in the staff report. Three, order abatement pursuant to the conditions listed on the screen, listed on the screen, as well as item number two on page four of the staff report, and authorize the chair of the planning commission to sign the abatement order, which is attachment A of the staff report.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. A question while you're there, maybe I misunderstood what you said, but I was led to believe that there's some easements that go through the property that serve the property behind it. Is that the case?
Yes, that's the case.
And those are owned by the other property? Is that also the case?
They're owned by other property owners, yes.
Okay, but it...
We'll hear more about it after.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now's the time for the property owner, if they would like to speak on this matter.
Well, I don't know about all the notices they said I got, but I didn't get a bunch of notices and stuff.
Can you hold on just a second? We need to get you on, and if you could give us your name, as you come up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Tom, the owner.
Okay.
And I didn't get a whole bunch of notices, because I just didn't get no notices. And then somebody, I had my kid going up there, starting to clean that place up, and then people that bought the place next door took down their fence and threw the old fence in my yard. That's part of that pile. I didn't make that pile. That didn't come from my place. And the container's gone. That was picked up and gone. We've been trying to work on it a little at a time, but I can't do it all too quick, because I just obviously don't get around that well anymore. I'm in the process of selling the place, and the new owner is going to take care of all the cleanup on the whole place. And two of the vehicles I'm going to have removed, and the rest of the vehicles, the new owner is going to take care of cleaning off the whole property, and they plan on putting a new house on there or whatever, something like that. So I won't be owning the place in the next however long it takes them to get it through that escrow process.
You don't have a time when that's supposed to close?
I don't have a date, no.
Because they didn't ask for now?
No. I've been waiting for this thing here to get done before I make any final commitment on, to them. But they've, they've made an agreement with me to take care of cleaning up the property. They're going to buy it as is and clean it, and they want to put a modular home on it.
Is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
As far as that easement, I own that property. Nobody else owns that property. That belongs to me. The easement is open to the two places in the back. There's no obstructions for them to get in and out of. The vehicles are non-op, which I was told by code enforcement was legal to park there as long as they're non-op. I don't know what else you want to know.
Okay. Well, unless there's, if you have anything else you want to share, you're welcome to do that. Otherwise, we'll let anybody else who wants to make comment on this, and then you have the opportunity to respond.
Okay.
I'm Rhonda Bridges, wife.
Okay.
So there is a lot of debris there. We were, as you said, in the process of cleaning it up, but the neighbors took a bulldozer and bulldozed our fence, the fence, into a pile, bulldozed the sheds, bulldozed the back, bulldozed everything into a huge pile. We did not do that. That was done by the neighbors. So I just think that that's important to say that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Others who would like to comment on this case? Step forward, please give us your name.
Don Casey.
Step forward to the mic.
Thank you commissioners for having us here and letting us testify today.
Lift that mic up a little.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you very much for having us here today and letting us testify. I'm the neighbor at 3265 next door. We share, we share a property in line with the Bridges', and I respectively disagree with just about everything they said, except for the fact that they do own the property. There was, we've been there for about two and a half years now, and there's been absolutely no progress made on that property. In fact, the piles of junk have gotten bigger, and it's gotten more dangerous. We, we asked the county, we submitted a Freedom of Information Act on the entire case file, and it goes back to 2011, and it's been the same story over and over and over and over. Nothing's happened. There's vagrants that are going through there. You have a beautiful community with this one area that's just, the house burned down six, seven years ago. There's been no action taken. So I respectively request that the county consider continuing with the abatement and taking care of the property once and for all.
Can you address the comment that the neighbors pushed debris into the property?
I think what happened on the property, on our side of the fence, we didn't do anything. The overgrowth and the snow was so big, it knocked the fences down. We had to build a new fence and actually lost about a foot of property. So I can't address the rest of it, the bulldozer.
Okay, all right.
I think Mr. Bridges can. His cousin is here today to testify, too. But it's been hazardous. We've had, I mean, picture yourself as your house. Next door, you have a burned-down house with vagrants. I've gone in there and taken pictures of needles. I've submitted this all to the county. We've been really patient. We waited a year and a half for this. And I was going to take action against the county, and I work with Ms. Maxwell. They've been very helpful with us, and we'd like to thank them. But, and we know, I mean, there's a hardship on Mr. Bridges' part. We respect that, too. But the reality of it is, is at some point, a hardship is temporary, a condition is permanent, and we're more of a, in a condition thing, not a hardship. And there is no contract, there is no escrow, there's been no cleanup. The container was moved. They took the stuff out of the container and threw it on the top of the pile. So it's just, it's just been an ongoing nuisance, and we'd like that abated. Respectively asked the commission to approve the abatement.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to comment? I don't, I'm not sure, didn't, come up, you can.
Oh, should I sign in?
No, I want to make sure everybody got sworn in. I'm not sure if the gentleman behind you, Don, is sworn in, so we're going to have to take care of that. But you, if anyone who didn't get sworn in, okay, county council, sorry to catch you with your, something in your mouth, but what, do we just now swear them in if they haven't been sworn in?
Yes, anybody that came in afterwards can be sworn in now.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Sue?
Okay. You could, you could stand right there, sir. That, that's great. Thank you. I need to have you please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do," now.
I do.
You may be seated. Thank you.
Now, has everybody else been sworn in? Oops, you were supposed to stand up with him, but...
Oh.
We can do...
She got sworn in before, I think, didn't she?
Did you get sworn in or not at the beginning of this?
I did not.
Okay, then you need to come forward.
I'm sorry.
Okay, do you, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do," now.
I do.
Please be seated.
No, she doesn't have to, Sue. You can.
Okay.
Go ahead, give us your name, please.
My name is Ann Kofelt.
Okay.
And I'm a relatively new resident to Dutch Flat, and I saw the property listed, and I made an offer on it. I didn't hear back from it. But I wanted to just, for the record, state that the old historic, abandoned structure that's on the building, should that, I just personally, as a historian, I heard that it was one of the first buildings in Dutch Flat. So before it was categorically deemed a nuisance and a hazard, I just wanted to state for the record that it would be ideal to be able to do a little research on that structure and find out if that's the case, and if there was a way of saving some aspect of it for historic nature, for either the Bridges' or who they sell it to, not to create a nuisance for the neighbors and not to create something that's to go into.
If you'd address the commission.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to state that, is that I feel very strongly that historic structures should be at least investigated to see if there is a reason to save them. So thank you.
All right. Somebody else want to, sir, that you come forward? Please give us your name.
My name's Charles Bridges. I'm a cousin to Tom. And I have to agree with the abatement thing. This has been going on for years and years and years. I've got things all from the county, all the different departments that have been active in all of this, and nothing has been done for years, except ongoing, ongoing promises of cleaning up, and nothing happens. It just gets worse. The responsibility for pushing the fence over, a neighbor asked me if I could do it because it was falling into the driveway. I went up and pushed it back. I admit to that. But what's left of the one building that's still standing, it's a safety hazard. It's leaning. It's going to end up falling into the roadway if something isn't done with it. Also, there was a hand-dug basement, per se, under the house before it burned. After the house burned, that hole was filled with who knows what, a carpet put over it, and dirt on top of that to hide that, so people don't know it's there. And it's just, it's got to come to an end. It's a safety hazard. It's a health hazard. I have neighbors that have had multiple rats in their house now, probably coming from this pile of debris. And I'd just like to see something carried forward and get something done. As far as building on the property, I don't, it's none of my business, but I don't think you can put a manufactured home of any type, because we have historic design control in the town. So that's pretty much all I had to say.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I know we swore in more people than that, so is there any other comments?
Hi, my name's Karsten Mentline. I am also a neighbor. And I just have to back what has already been said. It's been going on for years, and I share a kitty corner, so when I'm in my backyard, I see the back end, not the front end of the property. And I've been worried several times with people living there, no plumbing, fires. It's right there in town. I certainly hope that this comes to an end and, and something can be done to move this forward. It's been frustrating for all the neighbors. So it would be nice to see.
Do you access your property through their property?
No, I'm not the ones that have the easeway.
Okay.
So in one of those pictures, you could see the back of my house, you know, and my yard's there, so I'm kitty corner. I ended up having to put up, I have a trailer back there that, that people stay in, you know, overnight, my travel trailer, but, you know, the view is, as well as, as other things, it's just a danger and, yeah, needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lynette Vroman, and I'm also a neighbor. I live across the street, adjacent to the property, and while I cannot see all of it, I think the biggest concern is, of course, the health hazard that the property presents, the fire hazard. We all know that our fire conditions in California have become so severe, and the property is certainly a fire hazard with that building being halfway burnt already and barely standing, and the blackberries and the weeds growing up around all of the debris on the property. It presents a serious fire hazard, in addition to the fact that there have been transients and people who have gone and stayed on the property and then are in our neighborhood using the, the area as a toilet and that sort of thing. So it becomes a serious health hazard. So I just want to reiterate what my neighbors have already said. It is a problem that has been going on for many, many years, and we would just like to see something take place. And, and we do, you know, feel for Mr. Bridges' because obviously he is not in good health, and it's very difficult for him to deal with the situation, but at the same time, this has been going on for too many years. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else that wants to comment on this? Not seeing anybody stand up. Mr. Bridges, would you like to respond to any of the comments that have been made? Sue, could you bend that down again for him, please, or Karen? Thank you.
Yeah, this guy back here says that, that I'm not selling the property and stuff, whatever he said, like that way. He doesn't have any clue as to my business. How would he know? He has no idea what I'm doing. He doesn't know whether I'm selling it or not selling it. So for him to make a thing telling you that that thing is not being sold is just straight up bull crap.
Is there anything else you'd like to respond to the comments that have been made?
I have been trying to make progress on that property. I've been sending my kid up there to try to knock down the weeds and stuff when he can. And as far as transients and stuff, I have no control over that. Transients are everywhere. So I have no control over that. So I just need some time to get it sold and get it out of my hair, get it out of your hair. As soon as it's sold, it'll get cleaned up and be out of everybody's hair. I'll be out of their hair, and everybody will be happy.
Alright.
That's about it.
Okay. Well, thank you for your additional comments. Close the public portion of this and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. So, any comments?
I always am hesitant to want to send any form of government onto somebody's property to do something against their will. It just goes against my general nature. I guess that's why I take a little comfort in looking at, at a lengthy history before it gets to this point. I believe that the owner's case would have been better stated if he came in here with a contract on the property. That would have given us maybe something a little more to, to hang on to that side of the equation, which actually sounds like potentially the best end of the story. I don't know if, if we have the latitude to, to come up with some type of provision that would allow a short window of opportunity to pursue that to the satisfaction of the county, and either, either then close an escrow by a specific date, or have the property cleaned up by that same date, one of the two, to where there's no questions about it, and to where this does not need to be revisited, but that we either know the property is going to be sold and closed, with some type of disclosure going to the buyer, to where he is contractually committing to performing by a certain date also, within that sales agreement. Otherwise, I think we've got nothing, and we have to proceed.
Okay. Larry or Richard, do you have any comments?
Well, I think I find myself agreeing with your comments pretty much. We have to set a timeline for him to operate in, or we're never going to get any progress. I think that he has to be under some pressure to move forward and go ahead with the sale that he's talked about, or have another one, and within a reasonable time, or the door slams closed on it, on the situation, if we can do that. And I think we can.
Richard?
I have a question for county council that, that actually Jeff had asked about that. Is there any leeway as far as saying that it has to be cleaned up within, say, 90 days, or an esc, or the property in escrow? Or if not, then the county proceeds with this abatement? Is that, is that an option?
Yes, so the county code allows, if the commission elects to order the abatement, part of the, what's being recommended by staff and what is allowed in the county code would grant the code official the authority to authorize to abate the nuisance, so they could, the code enforcement official could, I guess, determine to make a decision to wait for a certain amount of time before enforcing the abatement.
I just want to be clear on this. If we try to modify this in some way, to tie it to the close of the sale of the property, the obligation to clear, clean the property goes with the title of the property, so that, you know, because we're gonna have, it could potentially have a different owner in the future, we may still have the same problem. But I want to make sure that if we do go down that road, that we make sure that this obligation transfers to the new ownership as well.
That was exactly, knowing how patient the process is, I would hate for it to have to start back at square one with a new owner. If we're going to accept the sale of the property as a resolve to this, then that sale needs to have the disclosure of the cleanup requirements and a definite drop dead date for that cleanup requirement within that sales contract. Or I think it's not an active solution.
Right.
Right.
I would agree.
The, the neighbors need to know at some point when they're going to be done.
Correct.
And I think that, that this has gone on a long, long time.
Right.
And, and if we're getting to this point, we need to come up with a solution that has a, a definite drop dead date to it.
I mean, typically with these abatements, you know, if the abatement order is issued by the commission, code enforcement would have the latitude to extend it out 60 to 90 days to see what does transpire during that time. You know, as you said, the sale of the property, that doesn't necessarily correct the violation. You know, the violation, in my mind, runs with the land, so the violation would exist. So I think really setting, you know, a timeframe, if the order abatement is issued, if, you know, between 60 and 90 days, if there is, you know, no resolution, then, then whatever the commission puts in effect takes effect.
So we could say something of not to exceed 90 days, that this needs to be resolved.
Yeah, maybe I'll have council look at it real close, but, you know, maybe, you know, the language may already be in the, you know, in what the motion would include, unless we need to specify specifically a timeframe that would give code enforcement, you know, more, more specific direction. Maybe that's their preference.
Yes. Does code enforcement want to respond to that? Michael, do you have a comment?
Good morning, commissioners. Let's see, right now, the order is written, I believe, to specify that if it's not done within 30 days, that the county has the authority to proceed. So I mean, I think there would be two options. Either we keep it as the county has the authority to move forward, but exercises its discretion not to, if Mr. Bridges is able to present a contract within, say, a 60-day period, and with, you know, essentially the, the close of escrow happening within 90 days, and the new owner giving some sort of commitment. Furthermore, we can record the abatement order on the, on the title to the property, so there would be notice in that sense to, you know, a subsequent purchaser. Or you could, I mean, the alternative is, we can amend the order to specify, you know, to have you be very clear that he has 60 days. So in other words, it's kind of like either you can put it out in detail, in written form in detail, or you can sort of allow code compliance to exercise its discretion in terms of carrying it out.
Well, I know it's up to the rest of the commission here, but I would like to see this not go beyond 90 days.
Right.
And it needs to be cleared up in 90 days. That lot needs to be cleaned of any of the issues in 90 days, so.
Ms. Chairman, I'd make a motion if.
He's got a motion, and we'll see where that goes. County council will let us know if we're going down the wrong track.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the issuance of an abatement order supported by the findings in the staff report. Would like, and I haven't found the exact spot where we would modify or insert this, but would.
I think you got some other fingers up there.
Would like it to include a provision that this happened within 60 days, that if the property owner can show county evidence of a valid purchase contract, that, that code enforcement would have the option to extend for another 30 days, but that in no way, shape, or form, this, this issue goes beyond 90 days. And, and I think that is being, under the circumstances and the time and effort that's gone in with this, is, is
Liberal.
bending over backwards to accommodate everybody and give, give it one more chance.
Chairman, so as you.
Need to hit number one.
Craft, craft your motion, I would remind you, let's start with, and we'll address these all separately, the four items which are under the recommendations.
You want to vote on them separately, is what you.
Yeah, so I would, I would suggest start with number one regarding the categorical exemption, and then when you get to those other items, then you can put your specific.
Okay.
Language together.
Then I will amend my motion to that we find this matter categorically exempt under SECA guidelines, section 15, 321, and Placer County Code, section 18, 36, 230, Class 21, Enforcement Actions by Regulatory Agencies.
Hey, it's been moving and seconded. We have two seconds, so I don't know, just pick one, and I guess we're good.
Can't go wrong. Yes. Almost a vote.
Okay, I have a first with Mr. Moss and a second with Mr. Rokucci. Is that correct?
Alright, roll call.
So, Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I would further move that we approve the issuance of an abatement order supported by the findings contained in the staff report. And I guess there we would, would say with a modification or a provision in that order, that, that this work be done with, within a 60-day timeframe, or that should the property owner provide county with a bona fide sales contract, that at the discretion of code enforcement, they could extend that another 30 days. But no way should it exceed 90 days. Second?
Let me just ask a question on that one. I just want to make sure the site is clean in 90 days. Is that?
That's, that's the intention of, of my motion, that, that in one way or another, either with or without a sales contract.
Clean in 90 days.
It needs to be cleaned up in 90 days, or code enforcement can go to work.
Okay. Are we good with that? Looking at county council, you're good with that?
Just wanted to clarify, that motion is also supported by the findings contained in the staff report?
Exactly, that was.
Okay.
First part I read, yes.
Right. Okay, now we got that clarified. Sue?
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Rokucci. So, Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I guess that the next motion would be that, subject to the, the timeframe given in the, the previous motion, that we order the abatement pursuant to the conditions contained in the staff report. Second?
Second.
Okay, well, we got two seconds again, so. Alright, Sue?
Okay, first by Mr. Moss and a second by Larry Sevison.
Okay.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I would further move that we authorize the chair of the planning commission to sign the abatement order, I guess, as modified.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Sue?
That's a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Rokucci. Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, does that close that matter out? Anybody, anything else? Mr. Cook, and we're good, okay?
I think you're good.
Okay. Alright, well, we have a 10:30 item, similar process to go through, so. Anybody who wants to testify on our 10:30 nuisance abatement, Mary Ann Melrose in Roseville, will need to come forward, so they can be sworn in. Okay, let's give it a moment. I'm thinking we don't have anybody. Alright, well, that takes care of that. So, code compliance officer? Do we have to swear you in?
I think.
Hello, yes.
Yes.
Yes, any witnesses.
Kate, if you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do," now.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. Two in a row today.
Hopefully our last.
Yes.
Not last for today, but.
So I have abatement before you for Mary Ann Melrose, property located at 228 Dulittle in Roseville. The owner of record, Mary Ann, Mary Ann Melrose, she is deceased. In the two years that I've been working the case, there hasn't been anybody else that has come forward to take responsibility for the property, or to make any contact, or in any attempt to try to, to clean the, the property as well. This is a kind of a location of where it's at. It's located in an unincorporated part of Placer County, near the Sacramento County line in southwest Roseville. The parcel is approximately .0825 acres in size, which is approximately about 3,500 square feet. Here is a street view of the property on Dulittle Drive. This was taken May 29th of this year. So this case began March 20, 2016, for the excessive amount of storage and debris at the property. Over the course of two years, from my initial inspection on April 19th of 2016, in which violations were confirmed, the division has issued several notices of violation letters, three administrative citations, and has proceeded with three administrative hearings, in which all of the hearings, the violations were affirmed, and decisions were rendered and sent to the property owner, posted at the property as well.
Can I ask a question right, right then, and there? The owner of record is deceased, you said?
Correct.
At what point? So where, where do these notices go?
We don't, other than, she didn't have a trust, there wasn't a trust, there's not a mortgage on the property, so there's no bank. So all we have is the property address.
Again, we're, that's what I'm saying. When did she pass away?
Before the case.
I mean, I'm sure we're doing what we need to do, but if, if we're sending it and, and no one's receiving these, it's, it's of any, you know, anybody.
Well, we've, we have.
Placement on the property is a sufficient means of notice. So I don't, I don't know if that's what happened, but if, had they placed it on the actual property, that would be adequate.
We've posted the property, and we've tried to make contact.
I know you've done everything, I'm just wondering, though, if there's, if there's no other can, or, you know, I'm trying to look ahead, how are we gonna, we're gonna abate it, but then what do we abate, and if we do go with, with it? Well, go ahead with your presentation, anyway.
Well, somebody's living there.
I was gonna say, that was, Mike, is, is it occupied at this point in time? Are utilities on?
At this point in time, it's not occupied. It was declared dangerous building, it has no power, the property.
Are the property taxes current, do you know?
I, I think it's in default from, there was a record posted that it is, what is it, tax, a tax lien on it.
Okay, so I mean, there is literally no sign of any attention, even at, at a distance, hands-off kind of thing.
Well, somebody put a fence up.
There was a, the resident at the property, we believe, is in relation to the property owner, but we, we don't have any confirmation of, of that. Prior to this case, I did work the property before with the owner, when she was alive, and she was obviously in poor health. There was a man there that she had identified as her son, but that's not the same man that's there currently in and out of the property. So I don't know if he's, if the person who was residing there initially is in any direct relation, or if he's just, I don't know if you're familiar with properties at Saber City, but, you know, they have a kind of criminal activity, so I don't know if it's just a squatter that has come into the property and kind of taken over.
So, in, in that, in that part, is, are the parcel owned by the owner, or just?
Mary Ann Melrose is on the deed.
Okay, so they are individual parcels that are, are separately owned, okay.
Correct.
Now, the notice for this hearing, was that posted on the property?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, good, thank you.
And, so, the violations are for storing an excessive amount of outdoor debris. The maximum allowed for the property is fifty square feet. There are also, there's also unregistered vehicles on the property that are not registered to property owner, or to anybody that is living at the property, as well as, uh, storage in the front setback at the property, which is a fifty, they have a fifteen-foot setback. So, this is my inspection from April nineteenth of twenty sixteen. As you can see, the condition, they have a lot of debris here. This vehicle is not registered to the property owner, and at this time, there's, there was somebody living in, in the van on the driveway. Here is July of twenty sixteen, so almost two years ago, again, debris starting to pile up. They installed a pool without permits.
Looks like home.
Here's the rear of the property, they had just, I mean, wood,
Ratt.
leaves, I mean, there's all kinds of items back here. Here's, this is November twenty-first of twenty seventeen, another unregistered vehicle on the property. You can see that the fence was put up. This is the view, so if you go, if you walk up to the front door of the property, you can see over into this view, and as you can, there's a vehicle back here, appliances, all kinds of debris.
Can I ask a question on that picture, could you go back?
Correct.
Is somebody living in the other structure right next door?
This one?
Yes.
Yes, there is somebody there.
Really?
Correct.
Oh, my goodness.
They got a job too.
Gee.
Yeah, we just discovered recently that they were taking power from, there's a water heater right here, and they were taking power from this trailer over into this trailer without their knowledge, so.
Oh, gee.
Um, here is just, here's this year, so, this was twenty seventeen, and then March, there's another, this is an unregistered vehicle as well that somebody else was living in.
What a mess.
How big are these appliances?
Very small, thirty-five hundred square feet. Isn't that what you said?
They have a hot tub now. You can see that, so this, there's a water heater that was covered up, you could see that they, I mean, trying to prevent that. Car's still back there, debris. So, this is May twenty, end of May.
Oh, my goodness.
Trying to, tires, appliances, again, there's a couch up here, there's this
We might be waiting too long.
And here is last Friday. See, just more stuff just keeps showing up at the property.
Turned into the local dump.
Yeah.
Well, that's, you know, that's
There's another, there's a half a boat, if you want a boat.
You know, that's what happens sometimes when a property, even in the city of Roseville, if you, like, little, or even a vacant lot in the city of Roseville, if it's, when somebody throws something on the lot, then everybody thinks it is a dump, a dump. So, a lot of this stuff could have come from somebody else, but that's not an excuse, but just, that's what happens even in my town. If, if you, if you, people just think that it's, it's, you know, anybody can do anything they want, and they throw it on the property if nobody's there to, to tell not to, you know?
Cheaper than going to dump.
Because if there's nobody living there, unless, and there's nobody, there's nobody owns the property, I don't think anybody that owns this property is bringing the stuff there, so it must be other people.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
It's a, it's a variety of people that bring stuff, they tinker back here, take stuff out, bring more stuff, so it's just a rotation of, of a mess, so.
Thanks.
Here's another view.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
So, at this time, code compliance is asking your commission to determine that a nuisance exists at the property, and asks your commission to order an abatement of the nuisance by removing the items that are in excess of the allowable fifty-square-foot limit for outdoor storage, including inoperable vehicles, and items to be moved out of, with, out of the setback within thirty days. The Division asks that in the event the violations are not corrected at the, after that time allotted has expired, that the commission authorize and power code enforcement to abate the nuisance by removing and disposing of all materials.
You've got an ugly job ahead of you.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When, when you go in to abate this particular instance, where it's a mobile home, or a motorhome, or whatever it is, it's buried in there, do you get rid of that too, or will you, in this case, just take the loose stuff around the outside?
Uh, we did post the structure for a dangerous building, so that's in the process on its own, but right at this point, we're gonna address the, the exterior item.
Okay, thank you. I guess this is a general question, 'cause sort of thinking about the last one, it took a year and a half to kind of get to this point, and this one is over two years to get to this point, and actually, people were referencing that it was even before it became an official complaint, that there were issues, and is there any way to expedite this process? Because I kind of feel for the neighbors, my goodness, they have to go through this for such a long period of time. I know you have steps and probably timeframes that you have to give people to, to accomplish this, but is there any way to speed that up at all?
Um, we have been working on, like, trying to get the nuisance abatement process started up a little bit sooner with some of these things, but with this one, it, you know, as you could see just this year, it got, you know, even worse, so it, sometimes it's hard, you know, they'll clean up a little bit, and then it goes back and forth, so that's kind of, with this one, with some of the delay, it was like, it looked like at one point they were kind of removing items, and then it just, you know, fell apart, so it's, we, the nuisance abatement process can begin a little bit sooner than, if, if it's this serious, we could get it a little
Question. What, can I, I just want to follow up on that, Larry, before you're, um, how much is the cannabis issue slowing down the process of addressing these types of issues on code enforcement?
Um, I'm, I'm not on the cannabis team, so I can't answer that.
Okay, Tim, you want to address that?
Good morning, Chairman Nader, and Commissioners Tim Wagner, Chief Building Official over at the Building Department, co-compliance, and our cannabis enforcement team. A couple of things I want to share with you is, to address the question about speeding up the process. About two years ago, actually, we presented the board and revised county code to allow code compliance to step in on a lot of activities with dangerous buildings and other things like that, so we are really starting to speed up the process in, in that area, as well as we brought a new supervisor on last year, he's really putting in some good process as well, and so we are expecting to truncate this. Do you hear Commissioner Moss's position that, you know, we don't want to be out there unduly, or really expeditiously, to allow time for the property owner to abate as they might be able to themselves, but we do find some opportunity to condense this somewhat. As far as the cannabis question and the, you know, how those work requirements might, you know, overwhelm, or where the times might be addressed as far as staff, is, those are two entirely different teams, so the cannabis team does not deal with this type of activity at all, and this traditional co-compliance team, they remain the three officers down here, plus an officer in Tahoe, and neither of the traditional teams deal with cannabis, so, completely separate, so there isn't any overlap or, you know, slowdown because of the, of the process.
I just want to make sure there's enough resources still, because I know your hands are pretty full on the cannabis side.
Yes.
If there's enough resources still left on traditional code enforcement issues to, to get this done in a expedited, if appropriate, timeframe.
There are, and there are other strategies too, we're looking at, with notice of violations, and trying to condense that timeline a little bit too, so those don't stretch out, so we are looking at different processes to, to bring this in within some reason.
All right. Larry, before you
I guess the only question I have is, do we go in with our own county staff and mitigate this, or do we contract out to someone locally to do what we want done?
Oh, great question, Commissioner. We actually contract out for that. We have, we've worked with procurement, we either have contractors over there that we can go, you know, sign them up and get them out there. Many times, we have them give bids to us, so we can have an idea what the costs look like, make sure we're going with a reasonable cost estimate on that.
Those done pretty timely, so that when they, when it hits the point where they haven't accomplished something, does something happen pretty quickly after that on the county?
Yeah, the last two we've done, we've been able, if I remember correctly, we've had the contractor out there within thirty days. Well, one, we took a little bit longer because she was, she was moving along, but, yes, we do get pretty, got there, out there pretty quickly, yeah.
And the cost to the county, that goes on the property?
Right, we ultimately
Lean, again, on the property.
Correct, ultimately, go back
In this particular case, I guess we don't find anybody that steps up that says they own the property, or they're an ex, a kin, or whatever, then, then, then the property goes in foreclosure, and then people, it goes out to bid, or whatever, I don't know how that process works.
Yeah, so we're kind of at the bottom end of that lean recovery, if you will, but ultimately, that's what will happen, is ultimately, when the lien's resold, or what have you, then we'll recover that. You know, two, I want to make you aware, we've recently been working with the public counties' public administrator office to identify other kin that are related to these properties, just to make sure we are doing every effort we can to try to find a responsible person that could come take this over, so I want you to recognize, we, we are working with the public administrator, administrator's office as well.
Okay, any other questions? Larry?
Well, I have one question, and I don't know, maybe you're not the right people to ask, but trailer parks that, that are, say, hundreds of facilities in, in, trailer, and a lot of people, and just a terrible, terrible mess. It might have, understand that that's a state issue, and we don't get involved in it, and is there any way that, that that can be improved? I mean, we, we've got one in Tahoe Vista that is absolutely awful, and, and I'm under the impression that nothing can be done, because the state rules it, and they want to, they won't touch them now, they just let them go.
So, you're correct, Commissioner, the mobile home parks, RV parks, and the nature here in, in Placer County, the state is the authority over those. The county does have the option to be the authority, if we should so select. The difficulty with that, as you can imagine, it's a significant resource demand. We just don't feel we're positioned to take those projects on, if you will, and as you've discovered, many of these have some inherent issues with them, and so that's why you see it positioned as is today, the county's just elected to not take on those duties for the state.
Well, I can understand why they wouldn't want to, but
Right, right.
But it's just kind of like a blight right in the middle of a community, and you can't do anything with it, and it's just, anyway, different issue, different time, I guess. Thank you.
Well, I think it's an interesting point, because we have one here in Auburn as well, at the end of Bell Road in eighty, there is a, just notoriously awful mobile home park, and it's just so sad to see this in our communities.
So, so there's a, there's a difference that's distinguished when the private property owned is in this case, so that we do have an obligation out there, and the one I think you're referring to, we have been out there and dealt with some of the issues relating around that, because many of those are privately owned
Oh, okay.
in such a way, and so we're able to deal with some of that, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you, any
Question for you, I'm looking through the, the administrative citations, and it looks like in February, you issued one to a different individual. Your attachment K looks like was written to a Daniel Melrose.
So, he is the resident at the property, or was the resident at the property. He sometimes will disappear, sometimes he's there, so we didn't, we don't know his direct relation with the property owner, but he has, Melrose at the last part of his name, so I don't know if he was a grandson, or a son, or, or what, but he tried to, you know, get him, since he was there at the time, and initially, to, you know, resolve these issues, and obviously that, you know, he's kind of part of the problem too, so.
How did you verify that he is who he says he is? Did you
Well, I mean, it's
Driver's license, or?
Through the Sheriff Department, and that's all we could really kind of go off of. I mean, he's not on title with the, with the property at all, so there's really no other connection we have with him, so.
Thank you. All right. Could you put the recommendation back up, please? Thank you. Okay, what's the pleasure of the commission?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll move, we follow the staff's recommendation as shown. I can't quite read it here, it's better here, find, I guess we have to do it one at a time, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Yes, one at a time.
Find this matter categorically exempt under SECA guidelines, section one-five-three-two-one, and Placer County Code, section eighteen thirty-six-two-thirty, class twenty-one enforcement actions by regulatory agencies.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Sue?
That's Mr. Sevison on the first, and Mr. Rokuchi on the second. Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll further move that we approve the issuance of an abatement order supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Second?
Okay, movement seconded, Sue?
Sevison on the first, and Rokuchi on the second, so Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
I further move that we order abatement pursuant to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Second?
Okay, movement seconded, Sue?
Mr. Sevison on the first, and Mr. Rokuchi on the second. Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, I'll move that we authorize the Chair of the Planning Commission to sign the abatement order.
Second?
Pronto. Okay, it's right here in front of me. Moved and seconded, Sue?
That's Mr. Sevison on the first, and Mr. Rokuchi on the second. So, Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes this item, and now we move to the never-ending item. Thank you for coming down from Tahoe, Steve, so we can hopefully put a nail on this thing. Finally.
Oh, boy. He even got dressed up, didn't he?
I did.
He got a tie on. You don't have to do that in Auburn, you know?
The tie, I know.
A bunch of hillbillies down here.
That's why I was hoping it'd be in Tahoe.
Okay. Take it away, Gary
Thank you.
Davis parking lot issue.
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. For the record, I'm Steve Bialmo, Planning Services Division, Supervising Planner out of the Tahoe City Office. As you obviously recall from our last meeting, we brought for your planning commission a request to revoke previously approved variance due to noncompliance with the conditions of approval. In order to support staff's recommendation to revoke the permit, staff provided a history of the permit, as well as the, the property, and how we got to the position of suggesting a revocation. We also provided your commission with an overview of the section of the ordinance pertaining to revocations themselves. After hearing staff's recommendation, the applicant presented to your commission a suggestion to pay twenty thousand dollars instead of the thirty thousand dollars that was required in order to satisfy the condition. However, your commission felt that the full payment of thirty thousand dollars should be made. At such time, your planning commission closed the public hearing after hearing the, the testimony, and directed staff to return with a secured agreement that would contain an initial payment of ten thousand dollars, with the balance of the twenty thousand dollars to be paid over a period of five years. On May thirty-first, Gary Davis did provide the county with a cashier's check in the amount of ten thousand dollars, consistent with the direction from the planning commission. Additionally, a payment plan, a payment plan agreement was executed, signed, and notarized by Gary Davis. A copy of this plan agreement is included in your staff report as attachment C. As you may recall from the discussion at the previous planning commission, the provision of the revocation does allow the, your planning commission to modify the conditions of approval, should you see fit, in order to resolve the violation. So, with that, staff is recommending the following revised condition, number four, in order to acknowledge the payment plan agreement and the, the payment direction provided by your planning commission, and it reads that the applicant is obligated to pay thirty thousand dollars to Placer County for the provision of a new pub, of new public parking in the Tahoe City area, in an amount equal to the estimated cost of providing three parking spaces in the area. The three parking spaces are based on the proposed addition, which actually has been constructed, of five hundred and ninety-four square feet of an office space to be added, with the ratio of one space per two hundred and fifty square feet. The initial payment of ten thousand dollars was due and paid by the applicant on May thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, per, per the executed payment plan agreement. Subsequent payments shall be a minimum amount of four thousand dollars each, and shall be due on or before first June first, two thousand nineteen, June first, two thousand twenty, June first, two thousand twenty-one, June first, two thousand twenty-two, and finally, June first, two thousand twenty-three. This condition also contains the provision that says, states that failure to provide payments within ten calendar days of the due dates shall result in the revocation proceedings being scheduled before your planning commission. Gary Davis did submit a memo to your planning commission, which indicates concurrence with the payment plan. concurrence with the payment plan, um, as well as the revised condition of approval, and also stated that it was not his intention to, um, attend before your Planning Commission as he's in agreement with all of the, um, the staff's recommendation. So, um, with that, uh, staff's recommendation is, uh, that the Planning Commission find that the modification of the variance three-nine-six-eight is merited, um, pursuant to the county code section pertaining to revocations, and amend condition number four of the variance as previously read and contained within the staff's, uh, report, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Uh, I've got one. Uh, if something happens to Mr. Davis, um, you know, five years is a long period of time, if he drops dead, or, uh, if he sells the property, uh, does this obligation travel with the property?
Yes, actually, the payment plan agreement that is part of the, the notarized agreement does contain, uh, language, uh, to that effect, that it does run, uh, the applicant acknowledges parking variance three-nine-six-eight, and this condition run with the land and shall bind successors in interest.
It would be nice if that actually said that it, you know, if there was a sale of the property, that the total amount due would be due and payable at the time of sale of the transaction, so that's just me, uh, whatever, but, uh, you know, I think we're being overly generous, in my opinion, over the timeframe, uh, but I have to acknowledge that we screwed up too, as a county, in allowing this to kinda go on as long as it did, and it was an oversight that would probably have never been caught had it not been for a disgruntled employee of his that brought it to our attention, so, um, as I expressed frustration at our last meeting, we have spent way too much county time on this, and again, way beyond probably the thirty thousand that will ever get me out of this, so, um, I guess, again, I just wanna see this finally get done.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment, no question, but I, I think, uh, there's been a lot of communications and dialogue back and forth about, are we negotiating at a public hearing, it's not in the code yet, and this and that, I think what you said, this is partially our fault, meaning the county's fault, you know, not trying to assess any blame, but it was something that fell through the cracks, so this is like a, just a special circumstance, this is not gonna set a precedent for other ones, is, that's only, because we did, we didn't do our due diligence early on, and then kinda continued it for a little while, but I agree with, with the chairman here that we need to get this thing behind us, and, uh, while the payment plan is a little bit lengthy, it, it, it's all legal, so it's, I think we're, we completed our, our part. Yeah, I think we could add a PS here, that it, all, it is all due and payable at any time the property sells, at, at, at that time, is, is there any...
Could we add that language if we wanted to?
A condition?
If the property sells?
No, it's not in the, it's not in that notarized. No, I, I said it as a PS.
Can we modify it?
As an additional to the conditions of approval? Is that reasonable to do?
So, the condition of approval that's proposed is the one that was provided to the property owner, and the property owner is in here, so if we were looking at modifying that condition, we would probably need to continue this, um, to ensure that we don't have a due process issue.
Yes. I can't believe that he wouldn't, well, I shouldn't say that, I guess...
Yeah, it's up to him, and we, I, say, let's just put a stake in this heart, okay?
Well, if, if we have to go through all that, I would, I would suggest that we then go ahead and approve it as recommended by staff.
I think at the last, at the last hearing, we kinda discussed with staff about would the arrival of this money sooner versus later make a difference in a project being done or not, and the answer was probably not, so I don't know that throwing a due and sale clause unannounced to the property owner and delaying this another thirty days is, is, is going to be that beneficial to the county.
No, it's just a lot more... And the staff, beneficial to staff.
No, one more time and effort.
May I just make a motion there where you prove it as...
Actually, before we make a motion, just one kind of small point of clarification, and that is, uh, we had staff's report, the public hearing on this matter was closed in the last meeting, um, but I do believe that we need to open this up for public comment before we do deliberation and then make any motions. I, I get that there's nobody present, but just to go through that process. So, uh, my recommendation would be that we reopen the public hearing to, uh, for purposes of, uh, discussing this agreement, um, and then receive public comment, and in the event there is no public comment, then we close public hearing, and then go to deliberation and motion.
Thank you for that guidance, it's important to follow the process. Okay, I'll open it to public, uh, comment?
No publics. Can I kinda leave here and go up to the podium, or are you gonna hit me with that? With that?
I would hit you.
You have, you have two of them, you've got two, I don't know why you have two of them here.
Both hands, I guess, okay. I'll close the public comment period, and bring it back to the commission for...
And I'll go back to my question, do, do I have to read this, or do, can I just refer to it as the staff's presentation? Why don't you read it short, Larry?
If you're making a motion, you'd have to read the motion.
I need it on this screen.
Bring it up there, there we go.
Recommendation, Development Review Committee recommends that the Planning Commission find that modifications of the variance VAA three-nine-six-eight is merited pursuant to Placer County Code section seventeen-point-six-two-point-one-seven-oh, section C two, and amended condition number four of the variance VAA three-nine-six-eight as contained within the staff report.
Second.
Movement seconded, Sue, roll call.
It probably won't ask now.
Okay, I have a first by Mr. Sevison, a second by Mr. Moss. Mr. Sevison?[1785.83]